Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families. Clerk Samino, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Berika.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Hume.
Here.
Counselor Mackin is absent. Counselor Maglio.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Present.
Counselor Reynolds is currently not here. Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have a counselor who is participating remotely this evening, therefore, all votes will be by roll call. So, starting off with our announcements, I do want to commend the mayor and recreation, Acting Recreation Director, Chris Griffin, for a great turnout and a great day on Beautify Braintree Day last Saturday. And, of course, thank you to all the residents who helped clean up rake. We made a lot of progress in a very short amount of time, so kudos to the mayor, his team, and to, of course, all of our residents for stepping up and helping out on Saturday. I also want to note, speaking of environmental efforts, May 13, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Braintree High School Environmental Club will be holding Tree Fest. You can purchase a sapling for $5. All counselors should have received a copy of their flyer, and it reads, "Mother's Day, don't buy flowers; that'll last a week. Buy a tree that'll last decades." So, again, thank you to the BHS Environmental Club. That's Saturday, May 13, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Braintree High School. Also want to note that our Director of Veterans Affairs, Vinnie Fontaine, is asking for volunteers in preparation for Memorial Day, which is at the end of this month in 2023. They are looking for volunteers to place new flags at the final resting place of veterans around town and meeting at Blue Hill Cemetery in the Garden of Honor. Please call Vinnie Fontaine if you're interested in participating. His number is 781-794-8217. And, again, that's Veterans Officer Vinnie Fontaine. If you would like to volunteer to put flags at veterans' graves, it's 781-794-8217. And thank you, thank you to Vinnie, and thank you for everyone who's willing to volunteer their time for that important event. Are there any other announcements from counselors this evening? All right, seeing none, I would like to move on to communications and recognize and thank Counselor Reynolds for requesting this update on this evening's agenda. So, thank you, Counselor Reynolds. And this is for an update from Superintendent Lee, talking about how the debt exclusion money is being spent specifically on our school security upgrades, which was one of the items on the debt exclusion voted in 2020 by residents. Superintendent Lee, thank you for joining us this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Reynolds, for asking me to be here. Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to take some time this evening to talk about the money that was voted for security for the schools of $1 million in 2020 and try to put it into a context, not only with that money, but some other monies that the community received around the same timeframe related to security, and talk a little bit about the timeframe that has been under operation and where we are now in the overall process. So, since the vote, in fact, immediately following the vote, the school system had been working, as head members of the town, with a parent advocacy group called BSAG or Braintree School Safety Advocacy Group. So, from the moment the money was voted, we were actively involved in communications with them about their concerns related to school security. Obviously, we have the national incidents that we all know of that are horrific, but to focus it more on specifically in Braintree, what did we need to do to address security? In and around the same time, the district formed a working group that included teachers, students, administrative assistants, parents, and the Braintree Police Department to take a look at our security protocols, our security processes, and, again, our concerns that BSAG had already identified in terms of the overall school district. In March of 2021, using some of the money from the $1 million, which I'll get into in a second, there was a search committee put together to look for an outside organization that could come in and audit our entire school system and give us recommendations on how to best improve our security within the schools. In March, that committee chose Good Harbor Tech Mark to conduct a school physical safety assessment, and they came in during April vacation, when the kids were out of school, toured all 10 of our buildings. In fact, they also toured the maintenance barn and a couple of other corollary buildings, and provided a 546-page report in July of 2021 outlining some recommended security improvements. As we go through this meeting this evening, please understand this is a public meeting, and I would not be willing to share all the results of that report for obvious reasons. In December 2021, the Braintree Police Department was awarded an approximate grant of $468,000 from the Department of Justice School Violence Prevention Program, or SVPP. Steve Wallace from the Braintree Police Department and Andrew Marin, for those of you who knew he's still around, but not here, knew Andrew, worked together on that grant application, were successful in getting the money. That grant required a matching grant from the town. Again, that came out of the $1 million, and I'll get into the numbers in a second. So, using the audit report and the grant monies that were coming in, the working group continued to assess security issues from the report and made recommendations as to the most efficacious manner in which to spend the money that was available. So, with respect to the $1 million, a lot of it is not yet spent. So, of the $1 million, $843,750 remained after the matching grant was made. So, the town's side of that Department of Justice grant was $156,250. That came right off the top of the $1 million. So, that coupled with the $468,000 from the Department of Justice grant really is on the other side of the ledger. It'll be on the next slide that I'll show you. But what remained was $843,000. Most of the expenses up to this point have been smaller in nature. So, for instance, ID badges that all our staff wear. They also serve as COD readers to get in and out of the building in terms of access. $50,000 for the security assessment that I just mentioned from Good Harbor Tech Mark. Some other small pieces around East Middle School materials that they needed. About $100,000 in access control panels. If you come to our schools or our buildings, you need to get scanned in. There's a little keyboard with a card reader that our staff has cards. They just swipe it, they can walk right in, and nobody else can. That enhances security in all of our buildings. You'll hear us talk about securing the envelope of our schools. You know, access in and out is the most critical component that we see as it relates to security, and these access control panels do a great job in helping assist with that. And then, again, so smaller items, about $1,000 for a couple of security computers that we needed, and badges for the overall staff came with an expense, too. But the bigger expenses are the ones forthcoming. One of the issues that we've confronted with both the grant and the $1 million are lead times on equipment that we would want to install. Through the pandemic, obviously, some of those supply chain issues have affected industries that relate to security, so getting some of this equipment has been difficult. But we are in the process of procuring $400,000 in additional access controls and door alarms so that every exterior door in the district would have a door alarm. So, if a door was left ajar, or a door was propped open, or a door was unexpectedly open, an alarm would sound. That helps not only in preventing people from entering the building, but at our younger grades, it also helps us monitor who might be exiting the building at times we might not want them to be exiting. That's security. So, keeping those kids safe in our building is another function of security. So, these exterior door alarms will go a long way in ensuring that the envelope, again, is secured. The access control panel expansion is really related to making it as convenient as possible for staff and people who are authorized to enter our buildings to be able to enter it through a secure area so that they're not propping open doors and not having somebody hold the doors, they're not having kids hold the door open for them, that should they need to leave a building, they'll know that they can get right back inside just simply using their cards. So, that cost is about $400,000. We expect to have it all installed before the beginning of school next year. Again, supply chain issues have affected us somewhat. Also, coming out of that, $843,000 is approximately $100,000 in bus cameras. We run a fleet of about 45 buses. We do experience a lot of incidents that do occur on the buses. The cameras, again, will help us identify problems that are occurring on the buses, deal with those issues that might arise on the buses, and although not glamorous, it is security. Keeping our kids safe when they're traveling to and from school is obviously essential as well. At this point, we are earmarking some of that money for additional cameras at Braintree High School. East has over 100 cameras now. The new south building will have over 100 cameras now. The high school has approximately 25 cameras, which is insufficient for a building that size with the population as it is. But at this point, we have a remaining balance of about $181,751 from the $1 million. The members of the Braintree Police Department and members of our working group are going down to Durfee High School on Friday of this week to see some security setups that might be of interest to us. We continue to do research on the most recent technology that's out there in terms of security, and before we make any decisions about spending that last $181,000, we want to make sure that we're spending it wisely with the best information available, hence the tour in The other side of the ledger, as I indicated, was the grant. This is the $468,750. It came from the Department of Justice grant. Again, the match on the school side or the town side was $156,250. So, the total amount that can be expended is $625,000. This has really been spent on improving communications between emergency personnel in the town and the schools. So, the radios that have been purchased are digital in nature. They allow us to communicate directly with the police department and vice versa. It also, the radio infrastructure is about repeaters and other ways to make the signals stronger for both cell and for radios across the town. There are some issues and some dead spots within the town. This money will help eliminate those issues. Also, alert communication systems, both within the schools and from the schools to the police department. There's a big beacon at the police department now wired into the school for certain alerts that go out so they are immediately aware of any issues that we're experiencing. And then, software and support related to GPS tracking on our buses in other areas within our district. Total's $625,000, which is the total amount of the grant. So, that's the grant side of things. I was asked to come explain what we're doing with the $1 million. That is where we are, but I'd be happy to answer questions as appropriate.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Lee. Do any of the counselors have any questions or follow-ups for Superintendent Lee? Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent Lee. Greatly appreciate your overview, for being here this evening. As you had rightly stated earlier, this is a pretty, this is a very sensitive topic, particularly what we see is trending around our country and the importance of protecting our children. So, thank you for undertaking those efforts and those who have been associated, working along with you, the parents and the consultants. So, I just want to make sure that I'm getting a handle. I'm happy to see a lot of these things here look very appropriate, and what drove these changes was the audit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And as part of that audit, was there any kind of a dollar amount that was suggested from an approximate standpoint in order for you to be able to affect the changes that were suggested?
To take on all the recommendations that were made, and some I would suggest you I would not recommend doing. However, if we were to take the audit at face value, it was approximately $3 million.
About $3 million. And what you had to work with was roughly $1,468,000?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And when you mentioned the six, I think it was a 625 number that you had up there, that 625 represents the grant money of the 468 plus the matching?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which came right off the top of the $1 million.
Got it. Came off the top of the $1 million, leaving you at the 468.
No. So, on this side, this is the grant. So, the grant was 468?
Excuse me, 843.
Correct, sir.
843, my mistake.
Yep, you're right.
Thank you. Okay. So, and as far as that 843, how that was allocated, you had talked about some administrative changes, some assessments, is paid for the assessment itself?
It paid for the assessment itself, which is approximately $50,000.
Okay.
And it has paid for all the equipment that you see in the white on the screen, which includes the access control panels, some computers, ID badges, which go along with the access control panels. And then, we are in the process of procuring the $400,000 worth of door alarms and additional access controls. We're also in the process of procuring the bus cameras. We've been doing some work with the Teamsters around that. We're all set on that end. So, again, we believe all this will be installed by September.
Okay. That seems to be a pretty comprehensive list, so we appreciate you sharing that with us.
Yep.
And certainly, I do appreciate the sensitivity of the steps that have been put, the measures in, steps that are put in place for security reasons. They can't be shared publicly. And to your, I guess, your own satisfaction, are you pleased with the implementation to date and the timeframes that it has taken?
It's taken longer than it should, but, again, there are issues around lead times and procuring products. It's been a big piece of it. We also, we delayed slightly after the $1 million was allocated because we, at that moment, did not know whether or not we would receive the Department of Justice grant, which would have changed our thinking in terms of what we would have spent the $1 million on. Once that grant came through, most of the information on the grant, if you just go to that particular slide, really relates to direct communication with, whether it be ambulances, fire departments, or police department. That is a huge priority for the schools, so our focus became immediately there in terms of getting things done. We have a lot of the information that you see on the screen. We already have and is up and operational. Some of it still needs to be completed. So, once we had a firm understanding of all the resources that we would have available to us, we began to move. But, again, the lead times and some other issues have delayed it longer than I would have liked.
Sure. I appreciate that. And as far as the, who is conducting the installation of this work?
It's all third-party vendors.
All third-party vendors.
It's all part of the contracts that we engage with.
So, were those contracting costs and the actual labor, they're all included in those costs?
It's all included, correct.
That you provided for us?
Correct.
Thank you. And is there, is there a project manager overseeing this? Is there somebody who, with experience with these types of?
No, well, it's our business office, Sarah Kaufman, who you've met before, our finance and operations person. It is being driven by the working group that I described earlier. That includes police department members and includes administration, includes parents, teachers, and other people who are stakeholders in this process. We also have Lisa Lee from our technology department working on a lot of these issues because a lot of this is technology and has been instrumental in getting the contracts together and getting vendors in to come and give us quotes on the things that we might want to procure. So, it's a group effort.
All right. So, I guess oversight's really important to me, right? And that the right people are doing it. Project management is as well, where particularly the sensitivity of the time and the exposure, right? We're all, we're all very aware of that. We're sensitive to that fact. So, two years, what was the date that that was going, the 2020? We originally received the monies.
The vote was in November 2020.
And the monies became available to you?
Shortly afterwards.
Shortly after. Okay. And so, to, the reason I ask for the project management standpoint, with timing, and here we are in 2023, there has been a lot of, there's been a, there's been a gap in information as far as seeing actionable items being taken and implemented. So, I was just a little bit concerned about that from a time standpoint, and that's what led me to the question about as far as the project management. And this is no indictment of certainly of anybody who was involved in the process, but the level of expertise is something that I would be concerned about. Because my next question would be then, is there anybody who's overseeing, or is there a certification process or an as-built, if you will, type of a process that comes in and then reassesses the actual implementation, the work done?
My immediate answer is we have not had that done in the work that we've done around this so far. Again, we've used a blueprint of the audit to drive our decision-making with respect to the priorities that we want to have. A lot of the work that's identified in the audit has really been laid at the feet of the facilities department because a lot of it is, it's simplistic things that enhance security, right? You want every single door lock to work. You want every door to close appropriately. So, a lot of that work is being done by our own internal facilities department. Going through this process, and I understand your point about project management, but there have been elements that the timing has not been within our control. So, we've ordered certain things two years ago that simply the manufacturer can't produce to us yet, and that's a lead time issue, right?
And I can understand that, sure.
And you can think of some other construction projects in town that are really dependent upon when equipment is coming in. All along, we've continued our work with the police department around building security. They've come and done trainings for our staff at the beginning of the year. We run drills every single year, and we continue to meet, to talk about, use the Durfee example. They've implemented a specific type of technology that we may have an interest in, and having this working group, again, all the stakeholders go down and see that. We want to make sure we spend the money well, and we want to ensure that people understand that security doesn't always relate to the worst-case scenario that you can imagine in your mind. Security is every day what happens at a school building. You know, we have domestic issues. We have traffic accidents where what they're, you know, traveling with could be hazardous. We have medical emergencies. And so, when we think of security, we're not just focused on that national headline incident. We're focused on the day-to-day, too. So, making sure that the group of people who most intimately know that the issues that arise in a school setting are at the table to make decisions about how to best mend this money has been really critical to us. So, you know, is project management, could this have been done faster? You're probably right. It probably could have been, but I'd like to think it's been a thorough process as well.
Right. And I'm not criticizing the kickoff and the time and all of that. It's just the thoroughness type of a thing, and those who have that subject matter expertise that gives you that extra set of eyes outside of the community itself, who perhaps were much more intimate with how these processes work, where are some of the pitfalls, where are some of the operational aspects that we would have to keep our eye on outside of just our own personal experiences? And thank God, we haven't had, you know, the level of experiences that we've seen around the state and around the country. So, that, so, from a comprehensive standpoint, I'm very pleased to hear what the presentation has involved and what you've shared with us this evening. And from a comprehensive standpoint as well, you are augmenting not only just this capital outlay, right? You're augmenting that with actual procedures.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And as a means of ensuring that, God forbid, anything does happen, there's a level of readiness and awareness of the, of just the administration, the teachers, and even, I guess, to a level of students?
I think it's front and center. As I think you may know, a couple of years ago, we, working through the Braintree Advocacy Group, we brought in Sandy Hook Promise, and we have anonymous tip lines where our students can access, you know, adults without identifying themselves to talk about a concern that they might have. And when those, that information comes in, we run it down to make sure that there's nothing really at play here. We use things like Bark. Bark is a software system that monitors the communications that go around through our network and identify key words that we'd be concerned about, and we're able to investigate those things, too. And those aren't national secrets. We tell everybody that we have these things. So, they're all related to the internal protocols and procedures that we have. The best security we have are our own people, and by people, I mean not only staff, but also students as well. You know, if you look at some of the worst-case scenarios, somebody new. And to have an environment where somebody who knew is comfortable coming forward and talking about it allows those bad incidents from ever occurring. So, security involves a lot of things. You know, this is equipment that will absolutely enhance what we're able to do, but it's not the only piece of what we're doing as far as security is concerned.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. So, Madam Chair, I'm, Madam President, pardon me, I'm going to just yield the floor. I do have, I may have a couple more questions, but I do want to give my fellow counselors the opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. And Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. Superintendent, this is, this is excellent to hear of this work that is being done at the Braintree Schools. It's, I'd like to say we're, you know, ahead of the game, but I feel like you're playing catch-up with a lot of the stuff that you're doing, and this is stuff, this is the type of security controls that are in place in businesses and institutions all over, you know, everywhere I travel. And when I get into work, I have to scan in, and I have to enter a code, and when I go into facilities. So, it's great that we're catching up. It's, it's the world we live in. We need to have security in our facilities, and I think it's a, it's a great step, and I want to commend you and your staff for doing this work and working with the Braintree Police Department, the experts, and working, getting the grant money that we've gotten to do some of this work. So, I commend you, and it's, it's a process that I think you're laying some good groundwork for people to build upon and, you know, make that incremental improvement and make our school systems safer for our children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. The other counselors have questions or comments? Did you have a follow-up, Counselor Reynolds, for the second time?
Thank you, Madam President, for the second time. So, one of the things is, it's as we look forward, right? So, what we have here is, you've clearly outlined a response, and it's been a very good as far as the way that you've outlined this response. However, as we move forward, the tracking of issues, reports, perhaps risk assessments that you receive through whatever channels, what are the different types of channels that you would receive? Is it, I mean, other than what you observe, certainly, with the, with the infrastructure you have in place, what you're observing, you're able to make internal decisions and monitoring internally. Are there other means of information collecting for you for the purposes of determining your actions?
Determining actions in an incident or to prevent an incident from ever occurring?
Prevent.
Well, the primary ones for the school system are the ones that I've identified. You know, it is the monitoring of our network. It is things like the Sandy Hook Promise, which allows kids to drop anonymous tips, or parents as well. Obviously, we get a lot of information within the schools. Kids talk, and kids have concerns, and when they share it with a trusted adult, we have the opportunity to assess that information and to run it down. We track a lot of our actions through our student management system, and we keep a lot of the records that I just identified, whether it be through Bark or whether it be through Sandy Hook Promise. A lot of the information that we get that relates to security comes directly from the police department. If the police department, through the alerts that they get, has, have concerns that it might impact the school, we work collaboratively with them on what that information might mean to us. And then, in terms of discipline issues, the issues that occur within the schools, we track all that because we report all that to the state as well.
Okay. So, you've mentioned the Sandy Hook Promise, and that, from my understanding, is kind of like a national, I don't know if it's an official or unofficial standard? Is that essential, what you rely on?
I'm not aware of any national standards. The Sandy Hook Promise obviously was created by the parents of the victims of Sandy Hook, and they've taken upon themselves to create an organization that provides not only, for lack of a better expression, professional development for kids through activities they run after school through groups that are formed, but also an anonymous tip line. And one of the things that we had talked a lot about is, what about that kid who has the information but is not comfortable sharing it with a trusted adult? We still need that information. And so, that was just one more vehicle to say, hey, even if you don't want to talk to somebody, you can communicate through this format so that the right information gets in the right hands on time, and you won't have to expose yourself because it truly is anonymous.
Okay.
And so, what, you know, happens when we get those alerts is our administrators go, track down the kids, work with the parents, make sure that everything's fine as needed. We involve the school resource officer or the police department. We do have protocols for any concern that we have that might impact the safety and security of our students or staff.
Great, so when you, and that's, that's, it sounds very thorough to me, and I'm happy to hear that. From a gap analysis perspective, say, you've got, you've stood up this infrastructure or this apparatus, right, as a proactive risk mitigation measure? And are there periodic reviews of gap analysis of perhaps how, again, studying trends across other incidences in other locations in the country?
We study it. You know, the, one of the issues with some of the things that we're talking about, if you look at it from a national perspective, is you can do the same action over and over again, and half the time you'll save people and the other half you'll put them in harm's way. So every response is somewhat individualized, but we do a lot of work with the Braintree Police Department. We do a lot of work, you know, through them assessing the responses in other school districts that experienced such a horrific event to see what they did. You know, I think we are slightly ahead of some other communities in terms of where we are with the procedures and the drills that we run on an ongoing basis throughout the school year and how seriously our kids take them, which is in one way very sad, right? But they know it's a serious issue and they treat it accordingly. So when we run drills at the high school, you know, when they go into a lockdown drill, that, you can't find anybody in that building at that moment. And that's the way it's supposed to work, and 1,600 kids take that drill seriously. And it's kudos to the administration that's there. It's kudos to the people who helped put those processes together, and it's a little bit of an indictment on our society.
Absolutely, I would agree. The only thing I have left to really is just more of a, is a, is a, my own commentary would be, I would think that, first of all, I just want to say thank you for this presentation. It's a thorough presentation. There's a tremendous amount of work that's been done here. There's a tremendous amount of input that's been put in here. And that is, I'm very grateful for that. As we move forward from a, from a subject matter expertise or professional, specific professional oversight, are there any plans for the town, for the administration, to have somebody who would be a coordinator, an ongoing coordinator, someone who's looking at the gap, someone who's ensuring that the, that the practices that have been put in are indeed effective, the tweaking opportunities, et cetera?
At this moment, I am unaware of any plan to have a certain individual take over those responsibilities. Again, just remind you that we work daily with the Braintree Police Department. We work daily with experts that they have about where we are with our training and so forth. We are also in the midst of applying, there is another round of the Department of Justice COPS grants that are coming out, same amount of money. We are vigorously pursuing that, and we'll be submitting our proposal shortly. And we can take a look if we are successful in that about whether or not there might be opportunity within the grant to do something like that. I'm less worried about gap analysis because I think we have some excellent people in town who do this for a living, who come to our meetings whenever we ask them to come, who sit with us and debrief whenever something has gone on. You know, you can think of a few incidents in town and kind of the impact that the schools felt, not that they happened in the schools, but they happened around the schools. And I can tell you, after those things were closed, we met with the Police Department to go over everything that we did as it related to the things that they were doing to make sure that we didn't miss anything and that we handled the procedure appropriately. You know, we've gone to, as I think you know, the Parent Square Communication System. I think we've done a much better job for parents getting alerts out as quickly as possible when something's going on in town that might make a parent worry about what is happening at the school. I think transparency and credibility is a big piece of security, right? If you don't trust me, you're not going to share information with me, and I need you to share information with me. So I think we continue to evaluate how well we're doing this, and we're engaging with the people who I think know a lot more than I do about safety and security on a national level or a SWAT level of things of that nature, so that we're making sure we're prioritizing what they might prioritize while keeping in mind that we're still schools, and we want kids to feel welcome and safe when they walk in the door.
Right, I would agree with a lot of what you had to say. If I just, my last point, that's all I have.
Councilor Ryan?
And I'm done. Okay, I'm done. I would just end my, my questioning and my commentary. First of all, thank you again. Second of all, I would feel very strongly about a dedicated resource that is specifically responsible for real-time and proactive coordination and pulling together. I agree that we have some great resources in this town to be able to go to and look after the fact. But what I'm most concerned about here is that there's something, I think, for discussion, further discussion, I believe. There's space for that for us to say, can we actually enhance this and improve it with a more proactive individual, let's just say? It's a discussion point I'd like to have at the future.
Certainly.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, thank you.
Counselor Ryan, you're good? Who else? Mr. Lee, Superintendent Lee, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Appreciate your attendance and always being available for the council. So thank you very much, and I know we'll be seeing you later this month when we get into the budget.
Anytime, thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our old business this evening. We do have several public hearings, so I just want to take a minute to explain the procedures for the public hearings. There are several steps, some of which are procedural. So first, the council will need to vote to open the public hearing. Then we'll get the committee's recommendation. Next, we hear from town staff and counselors. After that, we will open it up from, to the public, anyone who wishes to speak. If you are here from the public and are planning to speak tonight, I do ask that you please sign in with your name and address, and then I will call you to the podium at that time. After public comment, the council will vote to close the public hearing, and then finally the council will vote on the matter at hand. So again, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I know the mayor and his staff, many of whom are here this evening, and I want to recognize them. So thank you again. Excuse me. All right, so our first public hearing for tonight is 23021 from the Retirement Board, FY23 Braintree Retirement Cola, or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for order 23021?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to open the public hearing, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Meglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. With that, I will refer to Counselor Reynolds, Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, for their recommendation on order 23021.
Madam President, the Ways and Means Council met previously and voted unanimously for recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak on this order from either the mayor's office or the Retirement Board? Mr. Gallagher, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I appreciate the support from the Ways and Means Committee, which we met with a few weeks ago. I'm happy to answer any questions. I can give a little background to those councilors that were not at the Ways and Means Committee. The process began last fall when legislation was filed to grant an additional 2% COLA to retirees in Massachusetts. That legislation was filed pretty much to help retirees in Massachusetts to have some relief from the increase in, in expenses out there in the inflationary period that they have gone through. So the legislation was filed and was passed in November of '22 by Governor Baker, but he did put a caveat in that for the local systems. The Massachusetts retirees and the teachers' retirees got their COLA, extra 2%, in July of last year. The extra step that the governor put in added a local, the local option had to be recommended by the mayor and approved by the legislative body, which is the town council here in Braintree. So we began that, that process. Under normal circumstances, the Retirement Board has the authority to vote a 3% COLA on the current base. And the current base in Braintree is $12,000, and you were kind enough last fall to increase that base to $14,000 over the next couple of fiscal years. But to, we do not, the Retirement Board does not have the authority to go above the 3%. This legislation gives the Retirement Board that authority to go above 3%. However, in a local system requires a recommendation from the council, from the, from the mayor and a recommendation from the council. So we, the Retirement Board took the vote to do it, and then we met with Mayor Kokoris and his staff about a month, a few months ago, and went over, over the legislation with him and the process we have to go through. We appreciate his support for recommending this to the council. And then we met with the, the Ways and Means Committee a couple of months ago, last month, for their approval, and they're recommending it to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any councilors have questions or comments on this? Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. Does this include any retro, so to speak, going back to July 1, 2022?
Yes, it will. So, and Retirement Boards have until June to vote this, until the end of the fiscal year, but it will be retro back to July 1 of 2022. To date, of the 102 retirement systems in Massachusetts that this affects, 70 have approved it. The other 32 are still going through the process, like I am tonight. So if this is approved tonight, it'll be 71. But many towns are having their town meetings this month. I expect that number to go up. Will it be 100%? No, but it is retro back to July 1.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend the Braintree Retirement Board for bringing this forward. I want to commend Mayor Kokoris for putting his stamp of approval on this. This is something that I think is very appropriate for all the men and women that have worked very hard for the town of Braintree and given their service to the town. We went through the pandemic, and the cost of living went through the roof, and these folks are on fixed incomes. And it seems, I hear sometimes people use the term like the government's giving money away. Well, they, you know, the government was giving money away for unemployment to a lot of young folks, but these are the people that need this money more than anyone, people that have retired on fixed incomes. And this is very appropriate, and I'm going to fully support it tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Flaherty?
Can you remind me, we increased the base from $12,000 to $14,000, but this is going to be applied retroactively? So will it be applied to the $12,000 base or the new $14,000 base?
No, it'll be applied to $12,000 base.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I think I'm right on this, but I want you to confirm. The teachers and state retirees have already been granted this, along with the other towns that you've spoken of just now.
Yes, the state retirees and Massachusetts retirees got that right in July. It was ready to go. But the additional step the locals had to take has taken some time because we had to get, you'll see in your packet, a letter from PARAC, our regulatory agency, had to guide us into how we had to go do this. So many local systems have already adopted it, and there are many that are still going through the process. I imagine by the end of this month, those that are going to approve it will have done so.
Okay, well, I think the reason why we're seeing the state and various municipalities pass this is because it's the right thing to do. To offer a measure, a modicum in this case, of financial security in an inflationary economy for people who are largely on fixed incomes is important, and I will fully support this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Councilors? I have a quick question, Mr. Gallagher. The total amount being requested is, it's not that much, in my opinion, on our entire pension system. It's $237,900. Can you just confirm that that amount will still be, if our system can absorb that and still allow Braintree to meet its obligations to pay off our debt to the pension system by 2033?
Yes, good, a very good question. We did the actuarial study on what this extra 2% impact would be, and you have that in your packet. Your assessment to the retirement system for the next two fiscal years, starting this July and July of 2020, July 1 of 2023 for fiscal '24 and the following fiscal year, have already been set. Those numbers are not going to change. This approval tonight will affect your fiscal '26 assessment amount, and the impact of this extra 2% will be reflected in that, along with many other variables that go along when a, when a revaluation is done. Market conditions, you know, additional retirements, new employees, salary increases, the whole thing is meshed into that evaluation, which you will see reflective for your fiscal '26 assessment amount. But we still are on target to be fully funded by 2033.
Excellent, thank you very much. And I'll echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and we'll be fully supporting this this evening for our hard-working town employees who are now retired. So thank you. Who else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the motion before us, which is the cost of living adjustment for town retirees? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing for order 23021?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing?
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Meglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. And is there a motion for order 23021?
Motion that pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, MGL, Chapter 32, Section 103, and Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, the Town Council approves the increased cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2023 of 2% to become effective on July 1, 2022. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Meglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Gallagher. All right, moving on to our next series of public hearings, we have 23016. Mayor, request to approve the fiscal year 2023 capital plan or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for order 23016?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Counselor Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent.
Counsel Meglio. Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. With that, I will turn now to Counsel Reynolds, Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, for that committee's recommendation for order 23016.
Thank you, Madam President. At our last month's hearing at Ways and Means, the Committee on Ways and Means voted two in favor, one abstain, for favorable recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would wish to speak on this? Mayor Kokoris, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. I want to thank Ways and Means Committee for positive recommendation. And I would just like to thank my department heads that are here, and if you have any questions. I have my chief of staff, thanks to you folks, your vote last meeting, Margaret Laforeste, Dan Higgy, Kate Naughton from my office. We also have Mary Beth McGrath, Christopher Griffin, Ross Forsberg, John Thompson, Jim Rossenell, Mike McGurty, Ben Hulk, Rob DeVito. We have Dennis Gallagher, you just heard from, and Ryan Matheson. Just like to start off first by asking for your support tonight on this capital budget. And just wanted to start with the total that we're asking you to approve tonight, which is $21,619,959 to be spent on capital improvements here this evening. And just to highlight a few items. Our roads and infrastructure program, we have 2.7 million for roads, as well as 3.15 and 2.5. Those combined numbers, some are coming from bonding, some are coming from one-time revenue sources from our state and federal government, which totaled to over 8.3 million. And the infrastructure side of the water is a total of 4.6 million. And we're looking at about $13 million worth of improvements that we're going to be doing to our roads and infrastructure. So I'm very pleased for us to have that before you tonight. And just to talk and highlight a few other items. As far as the fire department, we do have the ongoing project that is set slated to start soon or go out to bid soon. And that is finally the renovation of our headquarters' fire station, which is so important. And I know that you've all visited it and have seen its disrepair and how much it needs to be renovated as well. We had, in, in a previous approval, we had asked for a fire engine. And that pumper truck actually, through some luck, we were able to get it in less than a year, and it was two years out. And our fire chief and his staff did a great job getting that. So we've made some significant investments there. There is, you'll see that there is nothing in this particular budget, but we have ongoing projects with fire, as well as a regional dispatch center, which is initially over $4 million for the build-out. And there'll be additional funding that we'll be seeking through the state. So that's a great $4 million asset. And we're able to, once again, as most of you know, take to JFK Memorial Tribe and bring it back to life. The last time it was operational, Counsel Ryan and I were water and sewer commissioners, and that was a long time ago. So it's good, it's good to see that. We also are continuing to replace our fleet of police cruisers. And we're investing, we're asking you to invest $324,000 there. And if you've been into the, I know many of you have taken visits to our police station. The HVAC system has always been an issue, so there's an investment there of 90 grand as well. We continue to put a million dollars towards our schools. And in addition to that, you know, in, in talking about the debt exclusion, we are in the process of replacing four roofs on our elementary schools, which was part of debt exclusion. And those are slated for the summer. Highlands, Liberty, Hollis, and Flaherty. It's amazing that we're going to be able to do that all in one summer, as well as the finalization of the first new school building, South School, South Middle School, being finished. There is grant money, not necessarily bonding money, for elder affairs, and that is $262,000. And that's going towards the finalization of, of the parking area. In addition, we have stuck with our commitment of our ADA funding. I know that there was a lot of conversation about that. And we do have department heads that can give specifics. If there's any questions, that's $280,000. And that was one of my first agenda items when I came on as mayor. We settled an ADA lawsuit. And what came out of it was us making a commitment to funding each year to, to make improvements. As far as the recreation department, and I'm happy to say that the Nate Beliga street hockey rink will be redone. We're in beginning phases of that. That's an investment of $450,000. And I know that we just had recently East Braintree Opening Day, baseball opening day, Little League. And we have a new DeLorean Field that has been funded thanks to community preservation and yourselves, which is another major capital improvement of $737,000. And we also have invested in some bleachers that needed to be replaced at many of the locations. And these are just a few things that I highlight that are significant in all different areas of our community. And I, I think it's important that even as we rebuild from, you know, the pandemic and that we maintain doing our capital improvements. And what we've been fortunate to have is, you know, this alliance with our state leaders and our federal leaders. And, you know, thanks to our federal leaders, thanks to Congressman Lynch, you know, we're talking $3.1 million that, you know, we've been given through him in an airmark. And we thank our senators as well. But our, and our local delegation has been part of us getting this $2.5 million MassWorks grant, our first ever. So capital is, is so important, but it's also important for us to find ways of getting capital funding outside of just borrowing or using free cash, et cetera. So this is a very significant investment in capital. And I'm very pleased to bring it before you. And once again, I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee for their hard work in this. I know they, they went through this, as they always do with every budget. And, and I appreciate their positive recommendation. And once again, I would ask for your favorable recommendation on it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do want to also recognize our Ways and Means Committee, chaired by Counselor Reynolds and members Maglio and Flaherty for their work. The capital plan and soon upcoming, the budget, is highly scrutinized, and it takes a long time and a lot of effort and diligence. So on behalf of the residents and, and the council, thank you all for your hard work on this. I also want to mention, this first vote is on the plan. There will be another vote on the actual budget money expenditure. So with that, is there any member of the council who wishes to speak on the plan? Counsel Maglio?
Thank you very much, Counsel Erica. And thank you also, Mayor. I was the abstaining vote. And I want to thank you for getting the information. I don't know whether it was Margaret or, or Ed, but the ADA transition plan was, is really an important document to have. I think it's pretty powerful to have all of that information and to be able to now use that to chart our plan. So I was kind of the holdout, simply just so we could get the plan. And now I'm excited that we can all look at this and work on it together. My second comment is just with regard to the elder affairs parking lot. I'm just, I'm assuming that any plans will happen, and we'll also incorporate members of the community as part of just the due diligence that I know that your office will do. Right, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Maglio. Any other councilors wish to speak on the capital plan? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I'll be supporting this well-thought-out capital plan, $21 million, I think, as you heard Mayor Kokoros discussing this. You were, he was talking about a lot of things in the town of Braintree that makes the town of Braintree great. Taking care of our school system, taking care of our parks, taking care of, you know, and something that people, that I'm very happy that this administration sticks up for, the roads. You know, the roads don't come in here and stick up for themselves. But as people will tell you, as you drive around the town of Braintree, we've made tremendous progress under this former government that we have in the town of Braintree. And I'm very happy that Mayor Kokoros makes it his priority to take care of the roadways in the town of Braintree. And I think it's, it makes, as you, it's tough enough to travel around Braintree. You know, certain times of day, it takes you 40 minutes to drive from one side of the town to the other. So taking care of the roads is paramount to me. Taking care of the infrastructure within the roadways, taking care of the water lines, the sewer lines, and doing it in a way that we're not going back and ripping up the roadways because we have to fix a water line. And I want to commend all the DPW staff that are here tonight that make sure we, we look out for the money we invest in the roadways, the precious dollars. So I'm fully supporting this. I, I think it's a well-thought-out plan. And you talk about, you know, new school buildings, replacing the roofs, doing the fire department over, rehabilitating one of our historical facilities in town. We're doing a lot of work in the town of Braintree, and we're making sure we're very wisely spending these, these funds. And I want to commend our staff for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Other councilors? Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you. As a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee, one of the points that residents drive home all the time is that they worry a lot about Braintree's facilities and infrastructure, which have many more needs than can be met in a single year, no matter how much you fund it. But this capital plan continues to fund maintenance at the same rate that we have historically done. And that's some progress, because we weren't able to do that during the pandemic. But it's also a problem, because things cost more now than they used to. So where we are able to allocate $1.7 million of funding towards the annual roadway and infrastructure program, we've done that many, many other years in the past. But $1.7 million gets you a lot less now than it used to. We're able to give the schools a million dollars, which is good, because that's what we've historically done, but that buys less than it used to. This is a problem that aligns with our annual budget in general, and it's one that the council has discussed to a great extent. And it continues to be an issue. There are some good things in this capital plan that I think, you know, the mayor has commented on quite a few of them. But I will mention that I think residents will be happy to know that there's going to be a sidewalk plow and also a sidewalk paver, which should help us keep our sidewalks in better condition and in better clear of snow and so forth over, over the, when the weather gets bad. And it's really good that we're able to do the work, to get state and federal funding to compensate for what we can't provide through our own general fund. But the Allen Street Project is a, is a really, really good example of that. There's $3.1 million of federal funding for that and $2.5 million of state funding for that. But together, that's more than we're able to spend ourselves, just in that one sum. So those are my comments. I'm going to support this capital plan tonight, because you can't spend money that you don't have. But, but I, I think that the condition of Braintree is quite problematic, and people should be aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The councilors? I will also be supporting, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Reynolds. Please, go, go first.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I echo the comments of the previous speakers as far as, these are, these are obvious needs that we have. The capital plan is designed to address those obvious needs. But the mayor had also mentioned something that's very appropriate and really, which looms over everything that we do as a town, particularly from a financial standpoint, that we cannot continue to depend upon revenues that are from other than one-time funds. And I do know that we have $8 million in this particular capital plan, which I did support. But I, I support it with caution. The caution being that we do have a severe revenue problem in this town. We have multiple needs that we don't have the money for. We have a budget that is coming up that we will scrutinize very closely. And I'm quite concerned about validating what our revenues are and, and what our costs are. But what illustrates my concern clearly here is that money was taken, again, from one-time funds. We relied on, for what I would determine to be more augmentation of our, our ability to operate as a community, and that is grants from the feds and from the state. But here we are in FY '23. We had a number of items that were pulled back from the FY '23 operating budget that had been approved, allocations for across multiple departments and services. That money did not get applied as intended. We've had money problems throughout the year. We just have to look at the schools, just one clear example. So I'm a bit concerned about how we are planning our spending and whether or not we are being realistic. This I will support. But all of this, all of, all of what I've mentioned, these difficulties, we have a very difficult problem looming ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Other councilors? Okay. I, I too will be supporting the capital plan this evening and want to thank the mayor and his team for crafting this and putting it together. I would offer, it would be incredibly helpful for councilors and residents if we could have some kind of dashboard of progress report. I think one thing that is challenging when residents ask us about projects that we have funded and approved funding for, it's very hard to know where we are in the process of completion. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping you and your team can provide the council with either regular updates, or better yet, something on the website where residents can track progress towards, towards completion of these critical, critical capital infrastructure projects. So thank you for that. Right, is there anyone from the general public who would wish to speak on the capital plan? Come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. And there's residents in a public hearing of a five-minute limit. And thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Sure, thank you. I actually had no intention of speaking tonight, and I wasn't.
I'm sorry, just say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah Forster.
An address?
And I'm at 65 Harrison Avenue.
Thank you.
I actually had no intention of speaking tonight. I came here for a completely different reason. But listening to the mayor, I kind of felt that I needed to say something. The mayor mentioned on the capital plan in the paving over at the elders affair, if I'm not mistaken, and that's Peniman Park. I understand we're just voting, you're just voting on the plan, not voting on the budget. I'm a little concerned, and I'm looking at Counsel Reynolds. I live up the street from Peniman Park. And two years ago, Peniman Park was essentially paved over. It was approved by the council, just sort of went through. So our park, our neighborhood park, is essentially paved over. And it was incredibly disappointing to the neighborhood. People came together last summer. Counsel Reynolds was there. The mayor was there to try and come up with a solution to eliminate some of the ridiculous parking spaces, give back the park to the community. And so I'm a little concerned about the fact that we're now asking for money to finish the paving. I am assuming that is the town just throwing in the towel on this? Because if anybody's been to that park, to that parking lot, you could park a couple of fire trucks in there. And they paved over the fields. So I am just voicing my concern that it would be a shame to finish the paving and not recognize the damage to the park.
One, one moment. Are you?
Yeah, that was it.
Thank you so much. I just didn't want to interrupt you. Thank you so much. You may take your seat.
Great.
Counsel Reynolds, did you want to add a? Yep. Please, let the counselor speak, please, folks.
I would agree with, with what, the depiction that was just stated by the resident is absolutely accurate.
On the plan, capital plan. I just want to make sure we're sticking to capital plan.
Well, just, just on that one particular comment, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
My understanding, there is no money that's going to be paving over the parking lot, to finish the parking lot. The monies that are in the capital plan are for a stormwater upgrade from the way the roads, the way that the water runs off of the roads in those neighborhoods, Harrison, et cetera, and comes down into that area. It is my understanding that there is not yet any kind of decision that has been made to go forward on that. And I, and I have been on the record of saying, we need to pull back that parking lot and restore the, the, or find the better balance than what exists today. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Go ahead. Mayor Kokoros, would you like to respond? Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is stormwater. Essentially, it's an investment that's, that's happening within the parking lot. We, we have been having discussions, and we have not, will not move forward with other. We, we have been having discussions and we have not, will not move forward with other than doing the drainage work. Uh, we've come up with some different, um, ideas of how we could, uh, make some changes there. So we have not definitively finished, um, the parking lot, but this is to move the stormwater, um, to where it needs to go. So we're going to have some continued conversations about this with residents. And, uh, we had a meeting, I would say about three weeks ago. I don't know, it could have been a month ago for all I know. But, um, we're going to continue to have that dialogue even. And, uh, town engineer John Thompson has come up with some modifications that, um, might work and, um, we're, we're still working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Thank you, Counselor Reynolds for clarifying. Um, right. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. And now, um, we do, everyone should have a printed copy of Order 23016 at their desks. Is there a motion for Order 23016?
Motion to approve FY '23 capital plan as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote to approve the capital plan.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next item, 23017. Mayor, request for appropriation fiscal year 2023 general fund capital budget, or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing. So do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23017?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to open the public hearing, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. With that, I will again turn to Chairman Reynolds of the Ways and Means Committee for their recommendation on 23017.
Thank you, Madam President. And in a recent, uh, Ways and Means hearing, the committee in Ways and Means, uh, voted unanimously, uh, for a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who wishes to speak on the capital budget? All good? Okay. Um, in that case, I'll open it up to my colleagues on the council for comments or questions on the budget component. Okay, I do want to just point out in that case, um, that when you look at the capital plan document, one of our goals for capital improvements is to expend about 5% of our general operating budget, um, through various means of funding, grants, borrowing, other sources. This year, we were able to exceed that goal, and I think using grants is entirely appropriate and in a very savvy way to go about, um, and enhancing our capital budget. Um, and as Counselor Flaherty mentioned, that is 3.1 million dollars from the federal government, 2.4 million from MassWorks. Those are both going towards Allen Street. Another $4 million grant creates the development of the public safety facility or begins that, um, item. So I did want to recognize our, uh, grant writer who I don't see tonight, Lorraine C., who's in the audience. But, um, I think, you know, as we think about the many ways that we need to improve our buildings, our vehicle fleets, our roads, our sidewalks, looking at all sources of funding is incredibly important, um, including, including grants and other opportunities that the town frankly doesn't have to pay back. Um, so that's even better. Uh, so I want to commend, um, again, our grant writer who usually flies under the radar but deserves so much credit. And, um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and please pass along our gratitude to, to Lorraine C. for that. And I do want to also let residents know this month, as we think about a percentage of our total budget that we're using to fund capital projects or that we aim to fund capital projects, to make that pie bigger, we need more money. Um, so throughout the month of May, our Ways and Means Committee is going to be voting on and, and digging into our budget. And as we get more revenue, we have more money to spend on all of these projects. So just want to reiterate that. It seems like a very simple concept, um, but it's not always the easiest thing to accomplish. So, um, I will be fully supporting this this evening. These are important projects, and I will look forward to even more in the future. So thank you. Right. Is there anyone from the general public who would wish to speak on 23017? Again, this is for the capital budget. All right, here, seeing none. Um, is there a motion to close the public hearing for 23017?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. Um, again, you all have a printed copy, uh, the councilors on their desks of Order 23017. Is there a motion for Order 23017?
Yes. Uh, the motion is that the town of Braintree appropriates the sum of $4,335,000 to pay costs for the following capital projects. Uh, it's going to be project amount and authorizing statute of police vehicles, 243,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. Police HVAC, 90,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. School building repairs HVAC, 125,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. School building renovations, 235,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. School technology, 151,000, chapter 44, section 7, 9. School library books, 144,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. Roadway resurfacing, uh, want, 1,700,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. Town ADA improvements, 280,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW facilities, parking lot and sidewalks, 135,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW cemetery ground vehicle dumpster, 135,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW highway two vehicles, plow and sand, 280,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW sidewalk paver, 60,000, chapter 44, S, section, it's chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW cemetery grounds, cemetery expansion, 565,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. DPW highway one sidewalk, snowplow, 191,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, that the amounts indicated above for each project are estimates that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects and less to others. So as long in the judgment of the mayor, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation by this order, made by this order, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor's authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to authorizing statutes described above or pursuant to any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Thank you, Counsel Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote for the capital budget, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next public hearing. This is 23018. Mayor, request for appropriation fiscal year 2023 enterprise funds capital budget, or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23018?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Simino. And again, I will turn to Counselor Reynolds, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, for that committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, recently, the committee in Ways and Means met and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who wishes to speak on the enterprise fund budget? Okay. One from the council? Questions or comments? Counsel Flaherty.
Just a, a quick clarification for residents here or who may be watching at home. Procedurally, what we're doing is we're voting now on the capital plan for our enterprise funds, which are, uh, funds that are supported through rate paying, uh, sources. Like you pay for water, that's an enterprise fund. And sewer is enterprise and so is golf. Because people who support golf, the people who pay for golf are the people who support the golf. And what we did before was to, mm, pass the capital plan associated with spending around the general fund, which is supported primarily through property taxes, but also, uh, and especially in this case, grants. So, um, that's just, just a point of clarification.
Thank you. Very helpful. Um, I actually have a question that may be for, um, our DPW director. When I was reading through the enterprise fund plan, I noticed there were several line items for sewer system modeling, catchment investigation, our mass water resources authority, inflow and infiltration programs. So all of those is from what I could glean from the documents, address the problems or investigate the problems with the sewer overflows and the SSO, sanitary sewage overflows. I'm looking at Counsel Maglio for help. Thank you. Um, so if that's the investigation, money for the investigation, and it sounds like we're, this is going to be the final third of that money, then what? What, what is our plan for fixing the leaks and reducing the frequency and the duration of those SSOs? Director Rossinall, thank you for joining us tonight.
Counsel President and Counsel. Um, yeah, so, um, it'll, it is a never-ending process unfortunately because we constantly have to be, um, trying to see if there's other areas where there could be infiltration within the, in the pipes. And on a regular basis, the pipes get old and have to be replaced and have to be maintained or lined or many other things that, to make sure that we don't, um, the, the, the water isn't entering the piping system. We also have to do a lot of other approaches to try to do everything we can to reduce the amount of inflow into the sewer system. Um, and it's, it's kind of an ongoing basis. And, uh, we're working with the EPA and with all the regulators to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance as much as we can be and, and, um, try to make sure that we, um, constantly, are constantly trying to make sure we, we reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration. So it will, it will be a continuing process.
Okay, so one follow-up then. So this, this money that we're appropriating is not just for the investigation work? It is also for remediation?
I mean, there's, there's different aspects of it. There's a portion that does the remediation of the, um, the sewer system. And we get grants from the MWRA, which is very helpful. Um, and then we also have separate projects that we do, some of them out of the MWRA money, some of our, out of our own money to remediate the system. So it's, it's kind of a mixture of different sources that we get it. Uh, and it's, it's to mitigate the inflow from, and also check to see where there might be, um, sewage coming into the system by smoke testing and different things. So it's, it's a combination of different, different ways of trying to reduce that inflow. I don't know if that really answers your question.
I think it does for now. Um, so thank you. I am going to support this because I think it probably bears larger connotation probably at a committee level. I appreciate the, uh, this evening. Thank you so much. Eric Kokoros.
Madam President, in regards to inflow, inflow is, uh, something that when stormwater is pumped into the wastewater system, that's something that can be addressed by any resident business, et cetera. We went through, I know that, um, Counselor Ryan and I went through a consent order years ago. And we put together an amnesty program, which I believe we still have. And it allows folks that are currently, um, placing, uh, stormwater into their wastewater system. So when we have these overflows, it's not because a lot of people are using their water at home or in the businesses. It's because stormwater makes its way and through, um, our infrastructure into our sewer system, either through the ground or people have sump pumps and they're pumping them into, um, the wastewater system. So, um, our goal is to eliminate, educate, um, folks on the, on the inflow. So if someone has a sump, sump pump and they're connected to the wastewater system, it's not allowed. Uh, but we do have programs to redirect them. And whenever we're doing a street over, we always ask folks if they have a sump pump because we can create a stub on the street before we finish the pavement, et cetera, for them to tie into so that they can get rid of whatever, um, um, water is being pumped from their sump pump. We also, under the previous, um, program, if we didn't have a way to tie it into the storm drain system, we would tie it into a dry well or something in their backyard. So, um, I think a big part of it, and it's so important, and I know I've met with councilors on it, um, in regards to, you know, our current issue, this has been going on for many, many years, and we will continue, uh, to do the mitigation even after we found, um, when we find, uh, where, where there's an issue in it. And, and on the infiltration side, it's a lot more work. It, it takes a couple of seasons. You have to get the measurements at one season and then look at it after you've done the work in the next season. And so the easiest and most direct way to remove inflow is to not put stormwater into our wastewater system. And it's interesting because we pump about three and a half million gallons of water a day, yet we send close to 7 million dollars to the MWRA through our wastewater system. So there certainly is a lot of improvement that needs to be done, and we've, will continue to, uh, work on that. But just, just so you know that we will do any repairs that we find if there's broken pipes or, um, that are available there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that explanation. I appreciate it. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to speak on, again, this is for the enterprise funds capital budget? Okay, seeing none. Uh, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for Order 23018?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. And with that, is there a motion for Order 23018?
Yes, Madam President. Town of Braintree, motion, the town of Braintree, Massachusetts, town council ordered that the town of Braintree appropriates the sum of $320,000 to pay the cost of the following capital projects. I don't know, say the project amount and authorizing statute, uh, project golf, lodge, rough, moors, 110,000, chapter 44, S, section 7, 1. Stormwater truck and catch basin cleaner, 210,000, chapter 44, section 7, 1. And for a payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, that the amounts indicated above for each project are estimates that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects or less to others as long as in the judgment of the mayor, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this order, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor's authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to authorizing statutes described above or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan and Counsel Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, last one on the capital. It's 23019, request for appropriation fiscal year 2023 capital budget for other available funds or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing, and is there a motion to open it?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. Counselor Reynolds, I will turn it to you for the Committee of Ways and Means recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. A few weeks back, the Committee of Ways and Means met and voted unanimously, unanimously, pardon me, for a favorable recommendation to the full council on Order 23019.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Okay. Any counselors? Anyone from the general public? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 22019?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to close the public hearing, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds is presently not here. Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Six in favor, zero opposed, three absent.
Thank you very much. And now, is there a motion for 22019? And all counselors should have a copy of this order.
So I have to read these all individually and vote on them individually?
Yes, please. And roll call individually. Yes.
That's wonderful. So first motion, E1, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $150,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of the Clean Water Assessment Management, SRF grant. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call for E1?
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds is not present. Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Six in favor, three absent.
Next motion, E2, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $3 million be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of water system distribution. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E3, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of sewer system modeling. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Samino?
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
The seven in favor, three absent. I'm sorry, two absent.
E4, Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds motion that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of sewer smoke testing. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E5, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $40,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of Ford Explorer. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E6, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $35,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of transit van. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E7, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $30,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of Ford Explorer.
Second.
I'm sorry, I misstated that. Ford Escape, that's the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E8, Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds motion that the sum of $20,000 be transferred from fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of leak detection correlation, LC 2500 sewer smoke testing. So moved.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E9, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from the fiscal year 2022 certified water sewer retained earnings for the purpose of Richiati reservoir pump replacement. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E10, Golf Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $17,000 be transferred from fiscal year 2022 certified golf retained earnings for the purpose of aeration core remover. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E11, Stormwater Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $108,000 be transferred from fiscal year 2022 certified stormwater retained earnings for the purpose of catchment investigation. So moved.
Ah, second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
E12, Stormwater Enterprise Fund motion that the sum of $123,750 be transferred from fiscal year 2022 certified stormwater retained earnings for the purpose of Elder Affairs BMP Town Share of State, Section 319, grant of $138,250. Matt. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two absent.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. And I want to also say thank you to the town staff, who are probably going on about a 14-hour day to be here with us tonight. So thank you. Thank you for sticking it out with us. And also to the members of the public who are here, thank you for sticking with us. So we are moving on now to 23028. Counselor Maglio, LGBTQ-plus pride ordinance or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing. For the record, it was renumbered from 007 to 3. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22028?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call?
I'm sorry.
Nope, we'll just pause for a minute.
Excuse me, Counsel Maglio, is Counsel Ringus on your phone?
He's not on it yet. He sent me something to read in and then asked me to call him during the vote. Would that, should I do that now?
He should be available for the public hearing.
For the, okay.
If we can get him on the line.
Oh, he's calling in right now, yes.
I can take your phone.
Hi there. So if he asked me to repeat something also into the record?
Oh, okay.
But that's also on your phone?
Okay, that's fine. Then you can, do you want anything to this phone?
I can? Yes. Okay. All right. Thanks. Dave? Oh, okay, great. So I have you, we have to open the public hearing.
Okay.
We need to open the public hearing.
We're going to open the public hearing.
Yep, so we're going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22028.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to open the public hearing, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin is absent. Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
All right. With that, I will refer to Counselor Ringus, Chairman of the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, for their recommendation on Order 22028.
Hello. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules did meet recently on this item. We did vote three to one for recommendation of approval to the full council.
It was three in favor, one abstention? Is that correct, Counselor Ringus?
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on Order 22028?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselors, last year was our first year of raising the Pride flag. And counsel, I want to thank Counsel Maglio for coming to me and making the request. And I will be supporting this ordinance. And I thank Counsel Maglio for all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erica Coros. That, I will open it up to members of the council. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak on this order, 22028? Counselor Flaherty?
The LGBTQ-plus community has historically been a marginalized group of people, burdened by heavy stigma, threatened by violence, and subjected to every kind of hatred. In just the space of my lifetime, the nation has seen the needle move on this issue from a time when Matthew Shepard, who, for the record, was exactly one year younger than me, was famously and horrifically beaten to death by his high school peers because they believed him to be gay. And now, when gay marriage has been legalized and we can discuss an ordinance of this nature without necessarily making national headlines, things are a little different. But growing up gay or being born anywhere on the LGBTQ spectrum is still not easy. The statistics showing higher levels of depression and suicide among LGBTQ individuals are well documented. And when someone decides to tell another person that they are queer in some way, the experience of coming out, so to speak, that can still be met with volatile anger, hostility, and lasting alienation. So the idea has been offered to me that instead of asking members of the LGBTQ community to come out over and over again, we can rather turn the tables and let them in. Instead, we can be a community where LGBTQ people know they are safe, know they are welcome, and know they will be respected. I think this ordinance takes us one step closer in that direction, and that's why I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flaherty. Any other, other counselors? Counsel Maglio?
Sure. Thank you very much. When I filed the first-ever Pride proclamation in Braintree last year, it was so Braintree could show support for LGBTQ-plus people who live in Braintree, who work in Braintree, who shop in Braintree, who worship in Braintree, who frequent our restaurants, who come to our pubs, who enjoy our outdoors. Basically, this year, the LGBTQ-plus Pride is an ordinance, and it's for all of those people I just mentioned who happen to come through our town. It's for every person to recognize and celebrate that the LGBTQ-plus members of our community and their allies, of which I count myself as a very strong one, make Braintree a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Raising a Pride flag is a symbol. It's a symbol of support, of tolerance, of dignity, and of value. Sexual orientation and gender identity go to the very heart of who someone is and how they move through life. Raising a flag, one that will be raised every year during Pride, says, "We see you. We support you. You are welcome here." Making this an ordinance instead of a temporary proclamation says, "Your belonging isn't up for an annual debate." I have received many messages and comments in support of this ordinance, particularly from parents of LGBT youth. Parents and young people alike know that communities are accepting, I'm sorry. Parents and young people alike know that communities that are accepting of LGBTQ people report lower suicide attempt rates, less isolation, more overall support, and less stigma. Flying a flag is an important symbol. Representation matters. Justice matters. Human rights matter. Every member of our community has dignity and worth, and this flag is a very small way to make a very big impact. Every year that we are embracing justice for everyone and that we raise this flag will help us eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Maglio. Either counselors wish to speak on this motion? Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be voting in favor of this motion, because this motion's intent sends a clear message that our community stands behind the fundamental rights of all Americans to include the LGBTQ-plus community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Reynolds. Counsel Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. I serve on the Ordinance and Rules Committee, and I did abstain when I was in the committee. And in all my 10 years on the council, I have never abstained from a vote. I feel I'm put here to take a vote. I abstained because I didn't feel this ordinance, this belonged as an ordinance. We've done a proclamation. We fly a flag. There's many groups in town, many individuals, organizations that we support, and there's no ordinances. And I struggle with this, because I'm fully supportive of the LGBTQ-plus community. I will always vote in support of the flag being flown in any individual. But I looked at all of our ordinances, and I abstained at the time of Ordinance and Rules, because, as I stated, I didn't feel that it fit as an ordinance. And saying that doesn't mean that I'm not supportive of the LGBTQ-plus community, of flying the flag, of doing a proclamation. Still, I don't feel it's fitting that this be an ordinance. Our ordinances, they're grouped as titles. There's general provisions, administrative and personnel, revenue and finance, licenses and permits, animals, health and safety, public peace, morals, and welfare. I thought it maybe fit in that, and it doesn't. So I'm going to stay with, like, again, there's other organizations. We fly flags out here in front of Town Hall for our veterans, for donate life, for autism awareness. We have signs at both ends of our community that we are an inclusive community, which we are. But there's no ordinances on those. And I don't feel that we need to do an ordinance. I will support it. I'll support the I've, I'll support the proclamation, flying the flag, all that. But I'm not gonna support the ordinance because I just don't feel it's appropriate for this to be an ordinance, um, for the community.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hume. Any other Counselor? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I will be supporting this tonight. Braintree, um, as long as I've been involved with my town, has been an inclusive community. And, um, I have, um, attended many functions here at Town Hall on how we celebrate including everyone in the community. And, um, my son is on, has autism, and I would see how my son would, you know, be included and would, uh, you know, it's really affected me seeing that, so I am gonna fully support this.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Ringus, one moment, please. Counselor Ringus is on the phone.
He's on the phone, and, uh...
Thank you.
He sent me the, the text to read.
Okay, so in, uh, Counselor Ringus is, Counselor Maglio is gonna read Counselor Ringus's statement.
Correct.
For the record.
Correct.
Go right ahead, Counselor Maglio.
Reading it into the record, yes. "Good evening, my apologies, um, because a commitment ran longer than expected and a delayed entrance has now become an absence. Despite that, I want to take a moment to briefly comment on this ordinance. First off, thank you to Counselor Maglio for reading my remarks into the record. More importantly, thank you to her for her work in drafting such an inclusive ordinance to formally recognize our LGBTQ community and the support this community has as part of our community as a whole. I supported this proposal as a member of the Ordinance and Rules Subcommittee and will do the same tonight, provided there aren't any technical difficulties, so fingers crossed. Far too often in society now, every little item becomes politicized. Standing on a soapbox for just a moment, clearly the media and big business is part of this agenda and dictating what issues are to the left or the right. Although I would agree that certain items push too far, it is incumbent upon all of us to recognize when that is occurring versus recognizing basic human decency. I have raised two young women, soon to welcome a third, whose gender is soon to be revealed. And I've coached or taught countless others. No matter how many children or other children choose to live their life or choose who they love, they should be respected and welcomed. To me, at its core, that is what this ordinance represents, that all are welcomed, treated with respect, and included as a member of our community." Thank you, Counselor Dave Ringus.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ringus, and thank you for reading that into the record, Counselor Maglio. I will add to my colleagues' sentiments this evening, and I thank you for your eloquent statements. I will also be supporting this ordinance this evening, and I want to thank Counselor Maglio for initiating this, um, as well as to Mayor Kukoros for his support, um, throughout the entire process, and also for the commencement of the flag raising last year. And I would now like to open it up to the public. I do have, um, two members who have signed up, so how we will do this is I will call you to the podium. Uh, there's a five-minute, by our Town Council rules, you may speak for five minutes. At thirty seconds, get one little tap at, when your time's up, there's two taps. So, um, with that, I have first, Monique Monroe. Thank you for being here and welcome this evening. Forty Heritage Lane.
Thank you. My name is Monique Monroe. I'm a proud transgender veteran. I helped run several transgender veteran support groups. We welcome everybody in the LGBTQ plus community. We welcome family, friends, allies, and supporters. We discriminate against no one. I'm, well, I would be in support of this ordinance, and I just wanted to say, I love this world, I love who I am, and we have to do all inclusive because way too many people succumb to suicide. Transgender veterans alone are forty percent higher than suicide rates than any other thing. Just, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your service. Next, I have Tara Crispin, sixteen Nickerson Road. Ms. Crispin? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. So, my name is Tara Crispin, and first and foremost, I would like to impart on the council the very serious feeling of personal safety I am putting at risk by talking about myself here at this podium. And I am the founder of Braintree Pride. And I am hoping that this will pass, and by all means, it seems like it's going to. So, I will continue to read my prepared statement, but I did want to impart on everyone that the violence and the hatred is real. I feel it every day, and my community feels it every day, and it's taking me a great amount of personal courage to get up here and speak on this topic as a lifelong Braintree resident. Thank you. A pride ordinance is an important step towards promoting equality and inclusivity in the community. All individuals, regardless of their sexual orientation or their gender identity, should have the right to safely live, free from discrimination and harassment, as well as know that their community values them as members of society. By Braintree passing this pride ordinance versus having to make proclamations every year, Braintree sends a clear message that it values diversity and respects the right of all of its residents on an ongoing basis. I can tell you don't want me to have to sit in your office and ask you about it every year, right? You know, it creates a safe and welcoming environment for the members of the LGBTQIA+ plus community. And it encourages businesses and organizations in and around Braintree, as well as the other communities to do the same. To have the ongoing commitment and support of the town fosters a sense of community and belonging to those residents that are LGBTQIA+ and oftentimes feel uneasy or marginalized by the communities that they live, work, and serve in. Again, I offer my support for the passing of the Town Pride Ordinance so that Braintree sends a clear message that it values diversity, inclusivity, and respect for human rights. It creates a safe and welcoming environment for members of the community, encourages others to do the same. It is essential for creating a more just and equitable society, and it sends a clear message of respect and support for the citizens of this town. And I would say to you, Counselor Hume, I respect your decision to abstain, and I respect what you say, but I would like to offer you this bit of my personal feeling is, you know, I am somebody that has children on the spectrum. I'm actually the chair of the Braintree CPAC currently for the two years running. And I understand what she's life is because I am in kidney failure. I get these things. But they don't face the same level of animosity and vitriol that my gender identity does. And I am quite frankly scared with the way that the rest of this country is going that eventually, we're not going to even be able to fly a flag. It's not just putting the flag out there. It's saying that you belong here. It's not gonna be brought up every single year. I've lived my entire life in Braintree. I have worked here. My family is Braintree. The family that I married into is Braintree. It's the Crispins, you know, like, we are Braintree people. And I just really, really sincerely hope that this passes without issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, next, and we do have a portable mic if needed, uh, we have Marco Rojas. I'm sorry, Mateo. I apologize. I have trouble with the handwriting. Sixty-six Elm Street. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Council, for having us here today, open for the community. First, I want to share, I am a transgender bisexual man, and I was actually informed yesterday this event was happening, and I want to be open here, that May second is usually a day that I stay home every day for, excuse me, every year for self-care because it's the anniversary of a hate crime, homophobic hate crime sixteen years ago. But when I heard that Braintree was having difficulty passing an ordinance to fly a pride flag, truthfully, I was shocked because this is such a loving community. I work in Braintree, and I see that even just the love we had in this room tonight of talking about what's going on in the Braintree High School with planting trees or increasing security at a high school because we love our children. I, I just see that there's so much love in this community, and I really want just to say that I don't think that you are a hateful person. That's not the, what I saw from this conversation. But what I think is happening is that we're getting caught up in the nitty-gritiness of policy and, uh, what could be written in between the lines, right? And I, I just want us to remember that this shouldn't be a radical act to pass this ordinance and have it be an annual, uh, statement to our community members of Braintree, like the way that you eloquently said, anybody passing through the borders of Braintree, that you're welcome here. As somebody who was a Jewish trans man, I can't happen to notice every single day the patterns that our nation is following on a national scale of the fact that we have five hundred fifty anti-LGBTQ bills right now on the Congress's tables, and we focus on a national scale all the time. But I, I would hope people would focus on the very small government, right, town government, and the power that we can have to really influence communities, and that's something we can do tonight by passing this ordinance. Something that I, I really wish I had growing up, I, I grew up in Norwell, which is so close to Braintree, but I was in Braintree all the time, is that I really resented, we really didn't have a lot of access to LGBTQ resources. Everything either was in Boston, or it either didn't exist. It was something I couldn't access. Um, and I think passing such an ordinance and increasing access to the, uh, resources for the community, for children especially, for adolescents, um, could really do a wonderful benefit to people's mental health. I work for Bay State Community Services, and, um, it's confirmed that if you have more access to resources, if you are an accepting community, you have accepting adults in your life, eight, the suicide rate goes down eight times. Um, and so this is something that even just by flying a flag, it, it's a strong statement from the adults that we really love this community, um, and that hopefully, the experiences that I had and experiences that I know I'm not alone with, and again, I, I grew up in the South Shore, right? This wasn't something that, I'm far away in the other side of the country, and these terrible things were happening, this was happening in our communities here in Massachusetts. And so seeing a pride flag now, something that I know that I'm safe, right? I see nasty flags, nasty flags floating around all the time with swastikas now, and always something that I have to keep an eye out for, especially as a Jewish person. So when I see a pride flag, it's a relief. It's a sign like, okay, like, I know I can be a little bit more open here, or like, okay, like, there's gonna be somebody here who's gonna defend me if something were to happen. So I think that's something that I hope that we all can reflect on tonight, and so I appreciate you having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here tonight. Crystal Evans, fifteen Hall Ave. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to thank those of you that are supporting the passing of this ordinance, um, and I wanted to echo what Tara and Mateo had just said. Last year, I had a home care worker come to my home. And she was in tears. She, she said, "My child just came out as trans," and on the way here, it was Pride Month, and she had seen multiple pride flags being hung. And she said it was a relief, as a parent, with the concerns of raising a transgender child, just to see these flags out in the community, to know that people out there do support her child. Um, and I just wanted to share that because these things matter. Not everybody comes from an accepting home. And having a ordinance versus a proclamation means that every year, this flag will be flown. We will have kids five years from now, but this flag will be flown as they're approaching middle school and coming out. And I just want to say that this matters.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. That, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for Order 22028?
So moved.
Second. Excuse me. Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin is absent. Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus. Can you say it again?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. Um, and now, is there a motion for Order 22028?
Motion, upon the request of Counselor Maglio, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, it is so ordered, the Town of Braintree supports the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus individuals, and acknowledges that LGBTQ rights are human rights. The Town of Braintree will support efforts to ensure the safety of our LGBTQ plus residents, as well as ensure the protection of rights and freedoms of LGBTQ plus residents. Every June, the Town of Braintree will celebrate LGBTQ Pride Plus Pride Month to provide an annual public opportunity to learn about the contributions and strengths of the LGBTQ plus community, as well as to support efforts to ensure the protection of rights and freedoms of LGBTQ residents. The celebration will include flying the progressive rainbow flag in front of Town Hall. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote on Order 22028.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
No.
Counselor Mackin is absent. Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Seven in favor, one no, one absent.
Congratulations, the motion carries. And, uh, I want to say thank you, thank you again to all of our residents for sticking with us for two hours to get to this point tonight, and also for those who spoke, it's not easy to come to the podium. Even those of us who speak frequently, it's still not easy, so thank you for taking the time to do that. All right, with that, I would like to move on to our new business. Is there a motion to move all measures under New Business to their respective committees?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call for motions under New Business.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin is absent. Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor...
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien, thank you. Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
He's gone. Oh. I lost him.
Okay, he just told me aye. I apologize. He was staying with us. And Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
So we have eight in favor, one absent.
All right, uh, with that, I would like to say our next meeting will be our annual town meeting on Tuesday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM. So, seven PM for our next meeting. It is at the end of the month so that our Ways and Means Committee can spend the month of May working on the budget. Um, and I'd like to say thank you again to our B-CAM team, Jerry Comack, and Bill Needham is back with us this evening. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, uh, roll call to adjourn.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is an aye. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.